All right, good morning. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, Board Work Session for this Wednesday, July 16, 2025. It's 9:03 a.m. My name is Ty Mensur, Chair of the Board, to my left Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Rachel Grant, Commissioners Carolina Mejia and Emily Klaus, participating virtually, County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Manager Jennifer Walker. Public virtual attendance available on our Thurston County YouTube channel. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. We have miscellaneous topics for the three-hour work session, and up first is presentation from Chehalis River Basin Flood Authority. We have guests in the room.
We have guests in the room, yes, and a presentation that we're loading. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Scott Betcher. I'm staff to the Chehalis River Basin Flood Authority. And then we have Edna Fund, who is Vice Chair of the Flood Authority, and Vicki Rains, Commissioner Vicki Rains, who is Chair of the Flood Authority. And I've been selected to be your speaker up front. So, let me see here. The Flood Authority, and I'll take about 10 minutes. Does that sound fine? Okay. The Flood Authority has been around since about 2008, and we are doing periodically, we make a round of local governments to acquaint new members, new council members, new commissioners to the Board of the Flood Authority. And so that's sort of the spirit of what this presentation's about. The opening slide, two key concepts to take away from this is that the process of flood hazard reduction in the basin is as much about flood as it is also about fish. Okay? And so the marrying of the two concepts has been able to bring this process along to where it is today. So, for recap, the 2007 storm was the genesis of the Flood Authority. It was a catastrophic flood. I don't know if any of you lived through it over here then. About $900 million in damage back in 2007. Lost economic activity for five days. Everything shut down 100%. You can see some of the pictures. It was muddy. It was devastating to livestock. The picture in the center bottom is a heap of cows. 95% of the commercial dairy herd drowned. It was catastrophic. So, we want to talk about the Flood Authority and what we do as the Flood Authority. We know there's a lot of things Chehalis out there, and it gets to be confusing. And I think you're going to have a presentation next week from the Office of Chehalis Basin. Yep. Okay. And that will help further clarify. So, this is about the Flood Authority. We do two things. We do local projects, and we have a flood warning system. And we're going to touch base too on a flood control zone district's proposed flow-through structure in the upper basin. I'll talk to you about that. So, the Flood Authority is formed in 2008 in response to the 2007 flood. It's focused on flood hazard reduction at a community level. Boots on the ground, community level. Decision-making is on the basis of science and what the local community see as their highest and pressing needs. You can see on the bottom of the page, the jurisdictions represented. And again, the takeaway is the Flood Authority is very much about boots-on-the-ground local projects today. Okay? So, on that subject, here's a screen grab from our local projects dashboard showing projects completed between 2012 and the end of the 2025 biennium, or 2023-25 biennium. 150 projects roughly. They take on average of about two years for a project. And the takeaway there is that you can do a lot in a little bit of time to protect yourselves. You can't stop the rain, and you can't stop the storms, but there are things you can do. On the Flood Authority Local Projects Program has spent about $90 million over that twelve-year period of time. So, what our local projects, I'm going to just give you an example of a few coming on down the basin, and then we'll get into Thurston County. The picture right here is PL. The 2007 storm wiped out a brand-new wastewater treatment plant, and it flowed untreated for quite some time until the plant could be brought back online. In other words, the public paid for it twice. The grassy swale you see there didn't exist before the Flood Authority's project. In 2014, they built that grassy swale for about $400,000, $500,000. That keeps the river in the riverside, and that keeps the treatment plant dry. And it has been tested. So, small investment for big return. Another example of a big return is the Chehalis Centralia Airport. The, if those of you don't know, there was a pump to keep the levee dry that circles the airport, but it failed in 2007. They had to bulldoze the levee to let the water out. You needed that airport for emergency rescue and all that sort of stuff. So, a new pump was built. It has actually two pumps in it, and the redundant and redundant power supply, and it sits out of the floodway, out of the height of the 2007 flood. That was about $1.2 million, $1.1 million. In 2022, you see the picture of the airport with the levee around it, and the water is outside, and the airport is dry. That's not just an airport. There's a lot of businesses in there too. And they operated uninterrupted during that 2022 flood, generating continual tax revenue back to the state of Washington. So, there was no drop in economic activity. There was no drop in tax revenue. And so, the state, for its million-dollar investment, is guaranteed, I think it's $9 million in annual tax revenue, uninterrupted. So, flood control, though costly sometimes, pays back. It's unsmart. Another example that we are proud of, made it to the governor, there's Governor Inslee on the lower right-hand side, is the Montesina Wastewater Treatment Plant. The Waynitch River was in the middle, in the midst of working its way around the treatment plant and to submerge it. We used 200 or so log structures that were placed in front of the treatment plant. And those log structures served to dampen the energy, drop the sediment, start to rebuild fertile soil in front of that treatment plant. Now, fish go through there. In fact, they have to chase fishermen off of that particular location because it's such a good spot. And the Waynitch River is moving away. So, we are really proud of that because it is very much a fish-friendly infrastructure protection project that has worked with what was a very difficult situation. Again, that was about $2 million, replacing that treatment plant. You can figure the cost, or moving it, you can figure the cost and the time. So, a little closer to home for you, we did a pilot in Bucota where we, in 1996, those homes flooded from the Skookamchuck River. Many of those homes were elevated, but they didn't put flood vents in those homes. And so, what would happen is floodwater would rise, and it could topple your cinder block foundations. We put flood vents in as a pilot in 11 homes. Average cost about $8,000. Those homes now are protected. You can see a picture of a flood vent in the bottom. But what's also really fun about this pilot is that certificate in the middle, that's a surveyor's certificate, it's an elevation certificate for FEMA. It shows that now those homes aren't in harm's way because they are protected with these flood vents that allow the water to go in and go out and not topple the foundation. They got a reduction in their flood insurance, 50% reduction on average.
Oh.
So, flooding solutions can benefit in a big way, and they also can benefit people's pocketbooks. And in a small community like Bucota, a 50% reduction in their flood insurance is meaningful.
Can you talk about flood maps and what flood insurance rates look like and how that affects folks?
Yes. The flood maps are complicated. They're out of date. And flood maps are zoned, and depending upon what zone you're in, the flood insurance will be required by a lender. So, is that what you're looking for?
Hmm.
Yeah. Okay. And so, in the case of Bucota, the majority of the town is in a zone that's mapped as a flood insurance zone from the Skookamchuck River. And so, as a result, anybody that takes out a mortgage for a home is going to have to pay flood insurance. And those flood insurance rates have been going up and up and up and up and up.
Yeah. And so, that prohibits economic activity.
Absolutely.
Tremendous amount of things.
Absolutely. You know, just as a quick aside, you've all maybe heard about the levee that was proposed in Aberdeen and Hoquim that is caught up in the federal government pullback of funds. Anyway, that levee would take all those properties that are now, that would, all the properties that would be behind the levee, they are now on the floodplain and require flood insurance. If the levee went in, they would come out of the floodplain and wouldn't need flood insurance. In Aberdeen, people don't want to invest because they don't want to pay flood insurance. And so, it is a real impediment to economic development. And that levee was going to be the mechanism by which you could remove those properties from the floodway and encourage investment because you wouldn't have to pay some unknown ever escalating.
Yeah. Because it's more than $15 a month. It's
Oh, yeah. No, it's thousands.
Hundreds of dollars a month.
Yeah.
Thousands of dollars a year.
Oh, Vicki wants to add something because I'm in her territory.
This is her realm.
No, you're not in my territory. I just wanted to comment on that. I know that Commissioner Fournier works in Aberdeen, so he's fully aware of the North Shore Levee project. That project alone, though, will remove about 5100 structures from the floodway. It's a very large project. It's actually, it's actually a suite of projects. There's the main levee, the west segment, and then we have Fry Creek and some other projects that will take place. Once those structures, and some of them are businesses, residences, and the like, are moved out of the floodway, it will retain about $3 million in Grace Harbor County that would normally be paid out in insurance premiums, flood insurance premiums. And I know in our community that we would benefit greatly from that. Without the levee there, Scott mentioned that there, a lot of people don't want to invest in that area because it's in the floodway. But it's not just that. You have people that have a home that they can't refinance, or they can't make improvements to, or they can't sell it. And this would help in so many ways. And projects like this throughout the basin are what's going to be needed. It's not just about, we're going to show you a really cool video in a little bit about a flow-through dam. And we're working on that. We're working on some local alternatives that are non-dam specific. We're working on habitat and species restoration. It really takes a culmination of things. But the flood insurance is very key, especially to some of your neighborhoods, Bucota especially. And to be able to retain that, those dollars locally and send them here versus sending them to NFIP or whatever independent insurance company you're using for flood insurance is a pretty big boon when you put the totality together. So, I just wanted to hop in and say that.
Perfect. Yeah. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
And that's right. I mean, there are, and hopefully, we're sort of conveying in a sort of quick sense, a range of project types. The process that we're engaged in is focused on the individual, like Bucota, all the way up to public workspeople and those communities with wastewater treatment plants.
Appreciate you being here, Commissioner. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm just, just a sidekick.
Good sidekick.
The other, so that's quick flavor of local projects. Oh, I should say, for Thurston County, we have done, just going back here, we've done some home raising when Cindy Wilson was here and Andrew Kinney. The gauging infrastructure on the right-hand side is a new gauge at Skookamchuck Dam to give accurate readings of reservoir levels. So, though you're not a majority of the basin, you have done, we've done projects in Thurston County that we feel good about. Okay? The other big piece that we do is the flood warning system. Flood warning systems are very important. Just think about Texas. We've had one in place in a big way since about 2015, and the bar chart really shows you a growth in sign-ups. We have people who haven't grown up here, and they come and move to the basin. They are not aware of the flood hazards. Having a warning system that can alert them when rising river levels are hitting certain heights gives them time. And so, we have a flood warning system that the state capital budget has helped to develop. But then, the three counties, Thurston, Mays, Lewis, and Grace Harbor, they share in the operational cost. The operational cost is about $100,000 a year, or $110,000, something like that. And when you, when you look at the number of sign-ups and the total cost, it amounts to about $26 per sign-up. Some of the sign-ups are to a central person at DOT, to a central person in a hospital. So, I think for a pretty marginal cost, we're really reaching a lot of people to give them early warning that the conditions are changing out there. And they should maybe consider helping a relative, or maybe consider moving their animals off the field, so it's a car.
So, I can't click on that here, but how do I find that here? You know, so it says sign up for high-water alerts here.
The link, the hybrid link.
How can I share, where's that link that I can, where can I find that?
Is it not working? Oh, I'll send it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
I post it, especially when we know we're going to have
Yeah.
We know that there's going to be a king tide or a high-water event. A lot of times I'll say, we've got this coming up. You might want to post this on social media. So, I can even share it where you want.
Okay. Thank you.
We can make sure that our clerk reaches out and will share it with all our commissioners.
Yeah, that would be great.
You might even, if you have an emergency management site, even on your emergency management page.
Especially right now. Everybody's really acutely aware of these issues. How, like, if, you know, we don't have flash flood, we never have. Anything's possible. But, you know, everybody is paying attention to what happened in Texas. What, you know, what does our system look like? How, if something was to happen, what, you know, how early of a warning would we have?
So, okay. Great question. So, the way this is set up is it's an email alert system that you select the gauges based upon where you live. You can see on the map, the colored gauges. We have like 14 of them. Those gauges, when the river levels hit certain heights, will throw off an alarm to those people who have signed up for that particular gauge. And so, we set the alarm levels between a foot and a two-foot before technical flood stage. So, and then the message you get says, hey, just so you're aware, river levels are rising. They've hit a trigger point. Here's a link to the hydrograph and more information so you can track and monitor what's happening. We don't wait until you're actually in formal flood because then you're in reactive mode, maybe even for some people, panic mode. We don't make good decisions when we're reactive or panic mode. These levels are set low enough, but still not like too low, so that people can say, oh, I really should start thinking about this, and maybe I can have some time to act proactively.
One that we really watch is the Grand Mount, is the Grand Mount Gauge 4. It's one I get a text or an email on that triggers so that I know what's coming down to Grace Harbor. But you can sign up for all 14. We've added a couple in the last couple of years. You can pick and choose and do just the ones that impact Thurston County or on either side, so you know where the water, the flow is and where, how quick it's coming. But it'll tell you that the gauge at Grand Mount is one foot below said flood stage, and this is a warning, you know, to be prepared. And then, that, you may not do anything. You may not be reactive to that, but it will key you in to be watching it and monitoring it. And the other thing that's really interesting is, that's what it's set up to do, is give flood warnings. But it also warns people that are recreating, maybe fishermen that are out on the river, and it will let them know, okay, there's, it's a good day to be fishing, but it looks like there's a storm coming, and they can also receive those warnings. Anybody can sign up for them.
Could something like that, that happened in Texas, happen here? Like, I mean, I'm sure in the, anything's possible, but like, what?
I, what I understand is those soils are hydrophobic. They're, they don't hold water well.
Water just sits on top of the dirt.
The way we operate here is, you know, we tend to saturate our soils. And then, once the water table's at the surface, like in November, that's when we start really get vulnerable for flooding. Could we have a, I mean, 2007 was a huge amount of water in a short period of time. I mean, what was the, up in the upper headwaters? Eight inches in 24 hours? Six inches in 24 hours?
A lot.
A lot. Yeah. And then, that resulted in a tremendous amount of water coming down. The basin is steep coming down, then it flattens out. As you get past Chehalis and Centralia, it flattens out. So, it was highly erosive up there. It blew out bridges and took out timber. Down in the lower basin, you know, it spread out and was just slow-moving. So, different characteristics. Could we have a flash flood? Yeah. You know, probably when our water comes up the fastest would be like in January or February, when you might have had a snowfall. The soils are saturated. You get a warming trend in an atmospheric river, and then suddenly, everything is flowing. That would be the perfect scenario for the worst case.
Okay.
2007 was, was a lot like that, though, where it just, we had a big rainy day.
Was it 2015 and?
We had another one in 2015. That's where Hoquim had the slides.
We woke up in the morning, and we were waist-deep in water.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and a lot of times, it's because it has no way to, nowhere to go, or no way to vacate the area. Canyon Court was a good example of that. Those people had to muck their homes out for months to, and a lot of long-term damage that took place during that event and the 2015 event, both of them.
Yeah. You take that scenario, you put a king tide with a westerly wind, it can hold that king tide in for several days. So, the harbor doesn't evacuate its water. Okay? So, you know, you really have to try to, it's all about trying to get the water out, and you have pinch points where it backs up. So, so on that.
Ocean doesn't flush.
That's right.
Things get stuck.
That's right. And so, the next, that's a good segue, because the next is, we want to talk about, I went in the wrong direction. We want to share a video about the proposed flow-through dam. This is the, perhaps, the controversial element of the Chehalis Basin process. You've heard about, dam is a controversial word. We can say that. However, we want you to have an open mind because this is really nothing that you've ever seen before, and it's new to all of us for how this thing operates. And the whole idea of this is you hold back water when you have those big catastrophic events because our basin has these pinch points that it can't get through fast enough. So, with that, I'll have, I think Amy's going to press the start, but it's about four minutes, I think, and.
Welcome to the Chehalis River, flowing through the forested and rolling Willapa Hills through fertile farmland and valleys to the marshes and beaches of the Pacific Ocean. The Chehalis supports the fish, wildlife, and communities that call Washington's second-largest river basin home. Water shapes the landscape in the beautiful Pacific Northwest. The slow and steady precipitation for most of the year can fall via atmospheric rivers during the winters. As storms move through the Chehalis Basin, rainwater makes its way to the river. The natural environment handles change well, and the river rises and falls throughout the year. But when extreme weather and intense downpour strike, the waters of the Chehalis can rage. A single major storm can cover dry land in as much as eight feet of water. The flooding can cause hundreds of millions of dollars in property damage, close I-5, destroy public infrastructure, and displace thousands of people, all in a matter of days. Traditional responses to flooding, like many of the aging dams across the nation, reduced flood risk to people at the expense of fish and a river's natural flow. But modern advanced technology means we don't have to make this trade-off anymore. The state of Washington and the Office of Chehalis Basin, through a basin-wide strategy, are evaluating something new for the Chehalis River. The FRE, the technical name for the Flow Through Dam for Flood Control on the Chehalis River, may look like a traditional dam, but this world-class structure is very different. This technologically advanced structure allows the river to flow naturally and fish to swim up and downstream without obstacle under all but the most severe weather conditions. It's also tailored to the unique needs of the Chehalis Basin. It focuses specifically on minimizing and avoiding negative impacts to Chinook and Coho salmon, steelhead, cutthroat trout, Pacific lamprey, Western brook lamprey, and more, while protecting people, property, and infrastructure from catastrophic flood damage. Based on cutting-edge research and innovative design, the Flow Through Dam for Flood Control mimics the height of the riverbed, allowing the river to continue its natural flow in normal conditions, and fish to pass upstream and downstream on their own. This design, called volitional fish passage, lets fish navigate the river on their own to find food, hide from predators, and rest. Instead of hitting a barrier as they would at a traditional dam, fish can move unaided through the structure through open pathways called conduits. The conduits mirror the depths, flow rates, and sediment fish find in other parts of the river during migration. The flow-through design also promotes natural river processes so sediment and fish can move through the conduits during periods of higher flow. When weather forecasts predict major and catastrophic floods, the structure temporarily operates like a dam, holding back water and reducing downstream flow. In the last 20 years, the Flow Through Dam for Flood Control would have held back floodwater just three times, but the benefits would have been substantial. Thousands of structures and hundreds of millions of dollars of damage to homes, farms, and other infrastructure would have been avoided. I-5 would have been protected. Thousands of people would have been able to stay safely in their homes instead of being displaced. The 2007 event alone caused over $900 million in damages. Only during these types of flood events, when the structure is holding back water, would an advanced trap-and-haul facility be used to pass various fish species and life stages upstream. To maintain flow downstream, even during extreme events, the Flow Through Dam for Flood Control will release average winter time flows, ensuring the river would never run dry during operation. After the flood risk has passed, the conduit gates would reopen to allow fish to move freely through the dam again. The Chehalis Flood Control Zone District is proud to propose a flood risk solution that serves the needs of fish, preserves the riverine ecosystem, and protects communities. This proposal for a modern flood protection facility is currently under state and federal agency review. For more information, please visit the website wwwshehalisriverbasinfczd.com to learn more about the Flow Through Dam for Flood Control and how it will benefit the Chehalis Basin.
Amy has to stop it. I advance it or, I'm trying. It's doing very well. Okay. So, the takeaway is on the flow-through dam, for me, innovative. It really is innovative. It's sitting on stilts so the water continued to flow through. It's responsive to the kinds of dams we should be building today, not yesterday's kinds of dams. So, that's a big takeaway. Also, it never shuts the river off entirely. You know, at its, at its, at the lowest flow, it will be your average winter flow. And so, there is intended to always be flow for fish to go through. So, big takeaway for you to think about. So, the Chehalis Basin, the stuff that we've shared today, it's working. So, the Chehalis Basin, the stuff that we've shared today, it's working. All of these organizations are working together and are sharing in the vision of flood hazard reduction and aquatic species protection. How do we know it's working? The legislature has continued to fund for about six biennia now. Major funding, major funding, major funding, major funding. They do that because they're not hearing consternation and they're not hearing disagreement and they're not hearing infighting, okay? They're hearing that there, there is a strategy moving forward. So, today, we're substantially better protected than in two thousand and seven. We have state-of-the-art flood warning system. We have hundreds of projects around the basin. We're pursuing solutions in a collaborative way, not fighting over them. Science is the bedrock for all of our decision-making. It's just a much better place. So, key folks, Vicki again is our chair, Edna is vice chair, Commissioner Fournier is on the board of the Flood Authority. I'm the staff person. Ty was there at one point in time. So, thank you. You also have a resolution that we have shared around all the basin governments, and I don't know if you want to talk about that now, but essentially what it is, is a resolution of support for this process and in particular that a dam is a key part of this process. And the process is evaluating levees, it's evaluating the dam, it's evaluating more of these small local projects, it's evaluating a whole host of ideas. And so, I'll just leave that there for the moment.
When it comes to dams, you know, like, it's something that's talked about a lot and, you know, you hear a lot about different tribal groups demanding removal of dams, you know, all over the state. Can you talk about this situation, how that might be different? And, you know, the fact is, the, your group is based within the Chehalis, within Chehalis Tribal Government.
True.
So, like, this is a different situation than kind of the traditional dam removal discussions, you know, like, most people aren't talking about putting dams in rivers anymore.
The, so, so the, just to give you a little idea of structure, the governor created the Office of the Chehalis Basin and in doing so, it kind of swept the Flood Authority under that. That's where our funding comes from, is from the state down to the Chehalis Basin and then, Chehalis Basin Board and then to us. And we do all the small local projects within the municipalities, local jurisdictions. On the Chehalis Basin Board, we have two tribes that sit on that board with representation, the Quinot Indian Nation and the Chehalis Confederated Tribes of the Chehalis. Both are supportive of, of the flow-through dam to be considered. At this point, we're waiting on a SEPA-NIPA process and an EIS process that will hopefully come towards the end of this year for us to evaluate and see how we move forward. Can we build the dam? Can we permit it? Is the, all these things are to be answered, but it is in our scope of work. We have several packages that we've outlined. We would do the FRE, if we did the whole meal deal, the FRE with the land, which is the local alternative non-dam projects, and then other projects on the Skookumchuk and some conveyance projects and levee projects. We have several different packages to look at through there that, that's our homework for the coming year and a half, to be able to provide the governor with some responses by the end of two thousand and twenty-six or third quarter of two thousand and twenty-six. So, they're all, they're both, both tribes are supportive of doing this work to see what our outcomes are and they've asked for additional science to be included in that. So they're, they've been supportive of, of going down this path. When we get down to the nitty-gritty, will they be supportive? It depends upon what some of these analysis show. But at this point, everybody's working together. We have a member, seven member with about a half a dozen ex-officio members from Conservation District, Ecology, DOT, Fish and Wildlife. I sit on it as well as Commissioner Scott Brummer, Chehalis Tribe, and, and the Quinot Indian Nation as well as, trying to think.
The two Js, Jay Gordon.
Oh, Jay Gordon, who's a farmer in Elma area, Grace Harbor, and then Jay Vanderstoop, who is a resident in Lewis County. We call them the two Js cousins, we say, but they're both supportive of the, of this facility as well. So, there's a lot of work that's gone into it. The governor created this group in two thousand and sixteen and Edna was a part of the Chehalis Basin Board for many years, up until just about a year ago, and then Commissioner Brummer took, took that spot. So, I think collectively, we have a really good team working together. We don't have, when I first came on the Flood Authority in two thousand and ten, I didn't have a seat on the Flood Authority, Cosmopolis, I was mayor of Cosmopolis at the time, didn't have a seat on the Flood Authority, but I was attending meetings because of the impacts that had for us. And there was a lot of fighting, there was a lot of arguing over which direction we should go or not go. And at the time, Mayor Schillinger from Montesano said, "I can't handle this anymore. Do you want to sit on the board for our city?" So I sat as Montesano's rep for several years until Cosmopolis was provided a seat at the table. But we were able to work through that and, and it's been pretty smooth sailing since, since then on the Flood Authority side and the OCB side. It doesn't mean that everybody likes every idea, but we've been, been able to build a consensus around, I may not like the idea, but I'm okay with moving forward till we get more information on it. And so, we do that with a lot of things because we just don't have all the answers yet. But it's a, it's a pretty good group, it's a fun group to work with, and in the end, we're really all after the same goal, which is to mitigate flooding, have some flood reduction for people in their homes and businesses while, while not damaging fish and the Native American culture that's important to so many. I hope that helps.
So I have some questions. So the video addressed the fish, you know, how they move, but I remember discussions about like, it said it would, it would have dropped three times in twenty years or whatever, but at the times that it needs to be closed, how much water, you know, is like, how much damage is done like above the dam to whatever, trees or ecosystems or whatever? And is that recover, like, is that part of the discussion that people's concerns and how, how does the science look on that in terms of, you know, the trade-off, obviously? It's obviously a huge amount of benefit potentially, but, but, you know, to have to hold X number of, you know, bazillion gallons of water for X number of weeks? And what does that do to, you know, the forest ecosystems that then, and then what, you know, how does that, how does that shake out? In terms of the discussions and the, I know you guys have studied this, it was being discussed when I was on the board.
I can, I have two comments.
Yeah. Just a, just a thought about that, so people can understand.
No, in terms of shakeout, I think all the resolutions that people have adopted around the basin say that we recognize that the gain is so much greater than, than the impact. That's the perspective of many of the local governments. In terms of the impacts of, to timber, forest land up there, it's a reservoir that goes back, I believe, six miles or so. The draft EIS process is doing ju, just what the draft EIS process is supposed to do, is tell you where the issues are. There is an issue about burning of log debris and that's not on the table anymore. And so, in terms of actual impact for active forest land, it's not going to be as if it were a highly pristine untouched area, number one. Number two, the EIS process is doing exactly what it's supposed to do. And so they're studying impacts to fish species and mitigating that. The dam has been realigned and, and as a result of the draft EIS. The whole movement structure has been adjusted because of the draft EIS, the construction, staging, sequencing. And so, what is so positive about this is all these entities, as Vicki has said, are willing to look at every single issue on the basis of the information and the science. And because these are red flag type things, dam, levy, you think a Mississippi-style levy, you think a Grand Coulin-type dam, they're not, they're, but we have no other better words. And so, we hope a picture says a thousand words about what this can be and help you. And the commitment to chase down every single issue to the point of satisfaction is there. And so, I hope that helps.
We, we committed to whatever work we do, that it, there will be a balance between protecting fish and aquatic species and protecting people, property, and businesses. We, we don't want to do so much on one end that it has an adverse impact, impact on the other. It's kind of like how, before these groups, before the Flood Authority, which is all the locals, small cities and the counties, and then you have representation from environmentalists to municipalities to tribes on the Chehalis Basin Board, there was a lot of discussion before they were created about, well, we'll just go take the Mellon Street Bridge out and see. And I'm going, don't, let's not do that because, yes, you open up that pinch point, but it is just going to drown us down below. So we have to be thoughtful in our processes and how we work together and that we analyze, this is a really good project, what are the impacts that are going to be downstream from that? Is it going to, a bridge removal, is it going to really impact Grand Mound? And then what's it going to do in Elma along the farmlands or in Montesano when it connects up to the tributaries like the Wainu'che and goes around the Montesano Treatment Plant? All those things come into play. So, the, behind the dam in that area, it's a large, large area and Warehouse owns the property currently and have been part of this conversation. So, we're not there yet as far as any decision-making, but we are proceeding to gather as much and do these studies as much as possible so that we have clear direction when they're, when they're done. I hope that helps.
And then like, I'm just like looking at the resolution. I remember we were circulating something like this a few years ago and I.
We've done it about every two, every other year or so. Because they, it's just a re-up, yeah. Part of it is because, well, not like the Thurston County Commissioners have, you guys have gone from three to five, but we see new mayors come in and new council members come in, so it's important to do that. And we have new legislators that come in at the state level, so.
Okay. And I, yeah, and I remember we, resolution, I think that Thurston, like, we had kind of a footnote, kind of along the lines of what you articulated, where you said, we support the, you know, including the study and the information, you know, we weren't really sure where we would.
Yeah, doing the due diligence.
Yeah. So, I mean, that was, I was comfortable with that at that time, you know, so, and maybe we can.
And I'm happy to work with you on any sort of qualifications, say, in that language if you, if you wish to.
And then, I guess my last question was, when I exited the Flood Authority, we were, there was the like, there was the kind of, I don't know, you guys, I don't know the right words, but there was a pause to sort of like start a process, the land, process, local alternatives, and, and I went to some workshops on that and I, I kind of didn't see the final report. Or, I mean, I kind of did, but I mean, I guess I just, where, where did that end, to kind of end up? Did it just kind of end up as like, here's some, some calculations as to kind of what kind of benefit you could get from all these different things? And you said there, you're going to package some different possibilities, both and or either or and?
Exactly. And we met last week and they should have numbered our packages, but they're A through F, there's six of them. So there's A through F and you'll see the first two include everything with some modifications, maybe to levees and conveyances, and then you'll have another that doesn't include the, the retention facility. So you'll hear FRE, dam and retention facility, and they're all the same thing. But you'll, it won't include those, but it'll include the, the land and then other components of the other things. And then you'll see some that includes the, the dam, but doesn't include the land. And that's been particularly interesting to me because we've seen with, for just one example, we've seen with the, the dam or the retention facility that we will see a drop of about a foot and a third to, foot and a half of, of reduction at Montesano. And then if you add the land component in there, that reduction drops to only about a half a foot of reduction because the land impacts it, the land projects impact it. So, for us, we're looking at, okay, well, we get a reduction, but it's not as much as what we thought it would be. But if we don't do the facility and we only do the dam, we lose all reduction and have gain. So, that's the pieces of the puzzle that we're still trying to sort out with the EIS study. And that's just one scenario. But it was, I'm not a science girl, you know, I, I, I leave all of that to, like Scott used to work for Department of Ecology and I leave all that to the, the people, but I can see on a map, when it says you're going to, you're going to move down a foot and a third or a foot and a quarter to a half, and then these other projects come in and that reduces your savings of water to this, and if you don't do the first component, it's even going to be worse.
That's because they're helping some, some other locations?
It helps, right. One kind of offsets the other in some regards and.
Can you give an example of like a, one of the, like, the people that weren't involved in it wouldn't know what it even means, the land, like?
The land is.
What's an example of like a land-oriented project that might be impactful?
They looked at walling off I-5 was one of the things that they talked about to be able to do that. They look at other levees, they look at other conveyances and things that they can do that are non-dam alternatives. And there's a slew of them. And then we, we also are looking at the dam removal. Commissioner Fournier talked about the, people are taking out dams. We're looking at the dam removal of the, on the Skookumchuk, and that's another big tributary that comes in and what impact is it going to have? All of these things are going to have benefits and they're going to have, are going to be detriments in some regard. And so how do we balance those out? That's what we're working on right now.
Because I mean, and again, I'm saying some of this stuff just because I was, for the benefit of my, my new seatmates, but like, the tricky thing I remember was that it's not just, it's a complicated system and there's not just one place where danger can strike from, right? There could be.
It's very complex.
There's been the one place that's really hit us, but there's other possibilities where certain conditions, like Scott was saying, like, you might get hit from another, you know, tribute, Skookumchuk, or I don't remember the, the different, like, priority of danger points, but there's possibilities, like the, the dam could be there and really help us in that scenario, but there are other scenarios where the dam wouldn't be as helpful or be helpful. So, you know, it's kind of like, we sort of need a suite of, of things.
We certainly do in, in certain areas of the basin specifically, but, you know, back in two thousand and seven, we had a couple of storms down in, in Grace Harbor. We had a storm in oh-seven, oh-eight, and oh-nine. We lost the dam in Cosmopolis in oh-eight. It wasn't a major flood, but it, it took out that infrastructure for us. And then the seven and the eight were lar, more largely impacting of the entire county. Well, they also opened the Wainu'che Dam during that time because they couldn't hold it back and that flooded a lot of people. So there's all these other variables that come into play that you have to keep in the back of your mind as you're looking forward in these other paths of what, what can we do and who will this impact and who will this benefit? It, it is kind of a shell game of sorts at times, but I think we have a really good group. We've got some great consultants that are, one of my favorites to work with is Larry Karpak with Watershed Science and Engineering, and he has done more studying and LiDAR and such in the Chehalis River than anybody I know. And biggest thing is not being science-related. He, he, he gets me what I need at my level to be able to understand, and I think that that's important, especially when you're dealing with constituents and being able to chat with them as well.
All roads lead to Grace Harbor, right?
That's right, that's right.
All the route.
Just one, just one.
Questions from Commissioners?
Okay, go ahead, Scott. Clarification, so you know, so it's local action, non-dam. And so what could those things be? That could be just elevating homes. You could go around and elevate thousands of homes at X cost. You could buy out people, buy their homes and their farms and return it to the flood plan. You could plant trees all over. And so some people are looking, can you do all these sorts of things at X cost and what kind of benefit over what kind of timeframe, as opposed to this, the dam, at X cost? What timeframe would benefit? And so it's hard to do apples to apples, but that's really where we're, we're at right now in this whole process. And the governor is expecting a strategy in the legislature that says, these are the apples-to-apples comparison and, and this is the preferred direction out of these six choices.
Has the new governor given any comments to, like, that signal any sort of difference? Has the new governor given any comments to like that signal any sort of difference in approach or position? I mean, I haven't heard anything that he said about the Shalas process or anything.
No, we we had, our legislative ask for this biennium was $80 million. And Governor Inslee put in his budget $70 million. And that's what he sent to the legislate legislature for this last session. And that session ended with us receiving $75 million. And so they know the importance of it, the legislature knows the importance of it, especially those in the 19th and the 24th and the 20th legislative district that are where the river flows through their areas. But the governor hasn't, certainly hasn't had any negativity or anything with that. Our frustration is, you probably heard this and read it online and and in some of the local newspapers, is the federal level removal of the brick grant funding that we had and which really puts at risk for the lower basin on the North Shore Levy, North Shore Levy West segment, the braided funds that we put together. Over the last two biennium, the state has awarded for that additional funding in the amount of about $36,000, $36 million. And so I think there's broad basin support for the second largest basin in the state, only second to Yakima. And so I think people realize in seeing the damage that occurred in '07, '08, '09, '15, '22, that we need to do something. Just talking about it and arguing for decades, which is what happened before, doesn't help.
All right, Commissioners, do we have any final questions for our guests in the flood authority?
It's a little longer than 10 minutes.
Oh, it's good. I it was, that's really awesome. I thank you for all that. I think it's important the Commissioners hear it and how you guys here is fantastic.
Thank you so much.
I'll be back with the Shalas Basin Board soon, so I'll see you all again.
All right.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
All right, we'll move on to item two, comprehensive plan review, overview, GMA, review process, public participation. Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner House.
Oh, that's okay. I didn't have a question. I just wanted to say thanks for coming in. I learned a lot and, yeah, I just appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
As you introduce yourself and your team, why don't you just share your desire in bringing these topics before the board for the next several weeks and what we hope to accomplish this weekend?
Yeah, well, good morning. We will not have a presentation nearly as snazzy as the last one, so apologies. But, yeah, we are prepping to bring the 10-year periodic update of the county's comprehensive plan to the board for review and thought it would be helpful to walk through a lot of the elements of that update so that when you really get into the meat of it with the giant binder that Derek is showing off, you'll basically have a a strong foundation. And so we're going to take these next seven work sessions to really just highlight where state law lies with the comprehensive plan update, what we've heard from the community, what we've heard from the planning commission, and then really highlight some of these policy questions for you that fall within the board's realm. So actually, let me go ahead and hand this out really quick. For each one of these, we've prepared, for each one of these briefings, we're going to have, oh, you guys, we have these little placemats. The intention of these is to have a reference sheet that you can take with you that has some of the key elements on it. And you'll see there that there's a a space reserved for policy questions. And so those are the areas where we'll probably have deeper conversations and engage more with this first presentation. It's going to be pretty high level, no policy questions, happy to answer any questions that you have about process or things that you've been hearing from your constituents that you want to make sure that we touch on in future briefings as we get, as we get to that topic. So.
This is our endeavor to take what will be a big conversation, important conversation for the county that will happen later this year. And rather than wait until the time when it needs to be approved by all of you, to go through the very dense and meaningful aspects of this, to break it out over a period of time so that you can start to absorb information, have access to staff in a non-pressurized environment before decisions have to be made. And I really appreciate the extra work. This is staff's commitment to keeping you informed as well as all the work they're doing with the department and the planning commission. There's a lot going on right now in CPED, and so thank you both.
Can I jump in real quick also? So this is a smart proactive suggestion by the director and the new planning manager to take the seven bite-sized chunks that are going to lead to that bigger hole. So just like the county manager said, this is an opportunity for grounding and foundation. But this is a new way of doing this because in the past, we've let the planning commission come up with all their time and recommendations and kind of give a little bit of snippets here and there. This is a much more formalized way to have this conversation, but I really appreciate the CPED team putting together. So thank you, Ashley and Derek.
Awesome. And so to kick us off, Ashley Arai, CPED Director, joined by Derek Day, our planning manager, who's overseeing the the team that's leading this effort. I, it's important to note that this is a cross-departmental team. We've been working with Public Works, Environmental Health, our Regional Housing Council to put together this this big comprehensive plan update. We've also been supported by Burke and Cascadia Consulting out of Seattle, along with a few other subsidiary consultants. This is the first briefing in a series of seven 30-minute briefings for the board. However, it's important to note that we also have spent a lot of time with the board in the last two years. This is basically a two and a half year planning endeavor that we have to do every 10 years. And we have held five briefings with the board previously, both to scope the plan as well as to provide updates, check-ins essentially on what we've been hearing from the public, and to spend time talking about the regional housing allocation effort. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Derek. And, yeah, we just look forward to kicking this off.
Thank you very much. This is an exciting opportunity as planners. This is the most exciting thing we get to do every 10 years. I'm sorry if you don't find it as exciting as we do.
We do the other eight.
Yeah, working on this. So we're going to talk a bit today about what a comprehensive plan is, what drives it, what's in it, what you all should be expecting as we move forward in this process. So a comprehensive plan is a long-term vision for the county. It primarily comes from the Growth Management Act, but it does kind of move out into other parts of the county's business. It is a comprehensive plan. It's pretty high level for the most part, and it's driven essentially by the community's vision for the future. So the idea that we're going to have people moving here, we're going to have new services that we need, we're going to have to have space for people, and how do we plan for that over time? This is the way that we do that. The comprehensive plan, it is guided by state rules and regulations, also our regional regional policies as well. The comprehensive planning process includes 15 different goals. Some of those goals can actually be a little bit in conflict. If we're thinking about housing, if we're thinking about the environment, those are the kinds of things that we're going to have to balance and find ways that we can accommodate new population growth, our new community members and neighbors in a way that doesn't have catastrophic impacts on our environment. Every 10 years, we get a big update to the comprehensive plan. We also do annual updates to the comprehensive plan sometimes. We're allowed to once a year make changes. A lot of times those are smaller changes. It might be an applicant initiated item, it might be some small tweak that we need to make kind of here or there. But generally, we do this cycle every 10 years and it's a bigger update. We get new population population projections and we build out a plan for how to accommodate that population. But I also want to emphasize here that we work really hard to make sure that this plan reflects the community's vision and values. So that's really important to us. It's been super important to the planning commission to try and make sure that this process is really community-driven.
Can you kind of give a couple of examples of things you do? Because I've come to learn that CPED goes above and beyond in its outreach efforts.
We do. So it's, I think, beyond outreach even into public involvement. One kind of small example is, you know, during the climate, climate chapter work at the planning commission, we had members from the Thurston Climate Action Team join the planning commission around the table to talk about what what they wanted to see from the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, for example. So there's, there's work to bring more people into the planning process. Then also outreach, we'll go through a little bit later. We've, we've been at over 30 events, we've seen 600-plus public comments, we work really hard to get out into the community, we've done kind of the standard public hearings, we've also done a lot of work to get out into the community and meet people where they are. So these are the the elements that we'll see in the comprehensive plan. Not all of these get updated every time. So the board had a series, made a series of scoping decisions in 2023 and 2024. So we won't see all of these being updated. I believe it's economic development and health that aren't getting full updates. But the rest of these are undergoing a pretty massive overhaul. So the comprehensive plan, it fits within this kind of larger framework of state regulations, and then it also trickles down to other ways that we do planning at the county. So it's guided by the Growth Management Act, that's kind of the genesis of this whole process. We also have countywide planning policies that it is responsive to. And then, once we develop the comprehensive plan, it has an impact on all sorts of other planning processes that we have. So it's kind of this big picture guiding document. It sets forth goals and policies, and then when we build out these other plans, those goals and policies should be reflected in those other plans. So it's pretty important to also understand that you're not going to see every single last detail in the comprehensive plan. It's the higher level plan. A lot of those details necessarily will come in the more detailed planning processes.
On the previous slide, you said that there were two elements you're not really digging into this year. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so when the, there's a scoping process for the comprehensive plan and there's a lot of discretion on how counties update their plans, there's some things that you will have to update, things like population projections and making sure your housing can accommodate people. But there is some discretion and during the scoping process, there was less emphasis put, I believe.
It was economic development and health.
Yep.
Mostly due to budget constraints. Those are chapters that previously we we had contracted out CPED. We didn't necessarily have the internal technical knowledge to update them and we didn't, we didn't have the budget to do that.
We've done a recent update in the periodic update, just two years previous.
Yeah, we, our last periodic update came in a little late in 2020.
Quite a bit late.
Quite a bit late. I was trying to be forgiving, 2020. So they're still pretty fresh and there is room to make updates to that in coming years if there's resources available. The EDC had supported the update to economic development and we do have a recent industrial land study that's been completed, could be used for the basis of that update. And then public health was contracted with by CPED to do updates to the health chapter. So it doesn't mean we can't update them, we just didn't have the resources during this one. Just one thing I'll, I'll add on to what Derek said. So the comprehensive plan really becomes for the the county and the department, a way to prioritize grant funding and like what, you know, what kind of monies we go after, as well as our program prioritization. All of those end up coming into alignment with this community vision and the implementation plan that's part of it.
The countywide planning policies that are principles that are supposed to guide consistency between the cities and the county. So when you say countywide, it means like countywide jurisdictionally.
Yes.
And so I just, as a background point, I mean, that's important. It's like, it's like the next layer. The state has consistency and then we've got things that we've agreed to do across all the jurisdictions in Thurston County.
And the state requires us to have countywide planning policies.
Then we have our own comprehensive plan within, under that umbrella.
Yeah, and that's a really important note because our comprehensive plan, it's Thurston County's comprehensive plan, but it's not necessarily guiding what happens in the sub-jurisdictions. So our.
The dark blue on there.
Yep, exactly.
So we've got those countywide planning policies.
Yeah, we we think this, the map on your reference sheet is helpful because, oh, you know, I live in the city of Olympia. I'm I'm most familiar with more urban level challenges in my day-to-day life. And so to be able to set, you know, pull yourself back and be like, but the comprehensive plan for the county is really focused on our rural unincorporated areas, that we have these joint planning, joint plans that we have, that we develop in coordination with the cities and our sub-area plans for places like Grand Mound and whatnot. So the com-plan, the county's conference plan really is for the dark areas on that map.
Yeah, it's all like when we do our five-year homeless plan, that's for, that's for everywhere in the county. I mean, it's always really important to delineate, like, this is us with our, you know, unincorporated county hat on, or this is us countywide hat.
So this is unincorporated county hat?
Yep. And I think it sometimes can feel to people like some of the like not my department kind of sleight of hand, but it is really important to note that that those pressures and those, the things that are driving the decisions in cities are really different than what are driving decisions in the county. And those are, those are really important distinctions. Like, for example, you know, we've got resource lands that we're trying to protect out in the county. Cities are trying really and appropriately to, you know, accommodate more development. So that kind of, those differences in what each of the jurisdictions is really trying to get out of a comprehensive planning update, it makes sense that we'd be able to have those separate and be able to make decisions that are really tailored to what's happening outside the lighter blue areas. Right. And then just a note here, we also have the UGAs and the sub-area plans. So those are places where we come together and we plan jointly with cities where, you know, the city is going to be growing out into what is currently unincorporated, but hopefully it would be incorporated in the future. So it does help drive those those planning processes as well. Okay, so the comprehensive plan, the process is driven by a number of things. We've touched on a lot of this. Really, first and foremost, we're trying to get the community's vision and the priorities that the community has for the next, next period of time, about through 2045. Also, we have, we get new guidance from state agencies, agencies like the Conservation Commission, Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of Commerce. There are, of course, changes in state law every 10 years or so at least. So we are responsive to those. They'll add new elements to the comprehensive plan, things that weren't in the last version as the state grapples with kind of these broader challenges. We see things like housing affordability and climate change, for example. Changes in local growth trends, we get, we get growth projections from the state, from the Office of Financial Management, and it's our responsibility to try and figure out how to accommodate those people. So those new growth trends, we also are looking for alignment with other county planning efforts. So the comprehensive plan can drive some of those, but we also want to be responsive because planning efforts, either there are those countywide planning policies that we're kind of responsible to be responsive to, and then there are others that might represent a community process. And we, that is feedback, that is input, and we want to make sure that we can keep those in alignment. So our growth trends for Thurston County, we are anticipating new residents. So we're looking at about a 30% growth over the next 20 years in the county. The the county right now is set to take about 12% of that. So we're looking at roughly 11,000 new residents in the county, according to these projections.
In the rural parts of the county.
In the rural, yep, the rural unincorporated county. Couple of other statistics on here, and it's also interesting to watch these against state, state averages. But we've got nearly 1 in 5 residents are people of color, our median household income is right around $88,000. And then we've got typical home values and typical rents that are in the $500,000 and the $2,000 range. So, and this is an important number here that nearly 6,000 households pay more than half of their income in housing in unincorporated areas. So not the first time any of us have heard this, but housing affordability is a significant issue in our area. Some of those new state and agency requirements that we're looking at incorporating into this plan, the new state requirements, this is an interesting one, is that we are required to plan for housing across. to plan for housing across all income ranges. So, at different income ranges, we need to make sure that there is housing available for the people who will be moving into our area. This actually, this is an interesting one, too, because it's harder to provide affordable housing in rural areas, because of the cost of infrastructure, the cost of land, so this is an area where working with our other jurisdictional partners is super important, and thinking about how we can make sure that the region supports affordable housing in a way that's both economically and environmentally sustainable. We also, we also are required to review our policies for disparate impacts, that is a new requirement, and then there is a new section of the comprehensive plan that is focused on climate change. And that is both for mitigation and resilience. We have new agency guidance that is also being incorporated, we have guidance from the State Conservation Commission on the VSP program, we have new guidance from WDFW on wildlife habitat corridor connectivity, and then in the municipal stormwater permits, which you wouldn't think about as a big land use issue, but there are requirements in the new municipal stormwater permits to track tree canopy cover over time, because of how closely it's related to water.
So, like habitat connectivity, are they going to say you're going to need to rezone these areas, because these are these wildlife corridors that the state's working on, or is it, I mean, what will that look like, to say that we've got to support increased connectivity?
You could, it could be something that looked like rezoning, I think you could also do things with development regulations, I always think about like tall fences and how that makes it harder for wildlife to migrate, things like tree retention, making sure that the habitat is connected is important, so there are a whole range of ways that it could manifest.
Yeah, and this is actually an area where, you know, we talk about unique engagement efforts that we've tried to, tried to launch in CPED. We actually called in some of our community members that were very interested in wildlife corridor connectivity, we basically set the stage for conversations where we pulled them in, we pulled in representatives from WDFW, representatives from a number of different nonprofits, and our programmatic folks in conservation to start looking at maps together and saying like, WDFW, if this is where you really want to see connectivity in your wildlife corridors, what can we do with our conservation efforts to help support you, and really just, you know, highlighting on a map, here's where there are gaps, and this particular nonprofit is looking at, you know, a conservation easement acquisition here, we've got another nonprofit looking at one here, maybe we could step in in that missing piece. And so, I think there's zoning, development regulations, there's also having conversations and creating those collaborative spaces to work with our partners, all toward the same goal.
It could be stuff, simple stuff like preventing fences through streams, so streams can be used as wildlife corridors, and-
Could be, yeah, I mean, there were a lot of interesting things that came out in that conversation, like we were talking about utility corridors, railroad corridors, that depending on the species, that your corridor map can be much more extensive than what you might usually think of. So, I think it's really, what the comprehensive plan update has done, though, is brought all of these different interested parties together, and just that commitment to continue those conversations, and make sure that the county plays, you know, plays whatever role they can in supporting those efforts, because we're not going to be the ones funding the big bridge over High Five, but how do we make sure?
Set the table.
Yeah.
Yeah, and our region is actually really important for some of the connectivity between wildlife populations in the Cascades and in the Olympics, so we're kind of right at the crossroads, really, for a lot of these populations. It's fascinating, and it always takes a little bit of time for the, you know, there's a gap between the biologists and the planners, usually, the biologists will identify a need, in this case, it's some of that habitat corridor work, and it takes a couple of steps to really figure out what it means for planning, and we're really in the early stages of it, but it's fun and exciting. So, I mentioned a little bit about this earlier, our team has a dedicated education and outreach program, we've got folks on staff, this is part of our just kind of standard operating procedure, but we were able to get out to over thirty-one community events, we saw a lot of really interesting themes through that public engagement, there was, the most engagement came through climate action, that was a big deal for the community, it resulted in nearly a month and a half, actually probably two months' worth of time at the Planning Commission, making sure that we really got what we wanted to see in the climate sections. There's a big push towards limiting rural growth, we also saw people wanting to see expanded tools for water conservation, and then general conservation efforts, which tracks for what a comprehensive plan is trying to do in a county environment. We were able to get out and talk to a lot of folks, we tried as much as we could to kind of meet people where they were, we didn't just hold open houses here and wait for people to come to us, we spent a lot of time out in the community. Also, the Planning Commission has had thirty-eight work sessions, actually, as of tonight, it will be thirty-eight work sessions on the comprehensive plan, and that is an important way for the community to engage, we've seen a lot of engagement through the Planning Commission.
And going above and beyond, in addition to having and doing all of that work to attend the Planning Commission's and be able to participate in meaningful conversation, they also joined us a lot at the engagement, or for those engagement efforts, they were the ones helping us table and would often introduce us to members of the community, because they're embedded in those communities, so.
Can you speak to some of the outreach to the usually not included populations, the Tindas, the Mercados, the different Asian markets, the table thing that was done there?
Yeah, so the team, I don't know if I was here when they were doing that work, but-
Oh, yes, yeah, so we partnered with CLO, and we have a member of the Planning Commission that's really engaged, in particular, in the Latin American community, and so, really, partnering with them to identify where we could engage most meaningfully, have had interpreters along with us, and this is where it's really important to go to their events, rather than asking them to attend ours. But, yeah, we had all of our surveys translated, we have actually gotten some survey responses in Spanish, we were just like, yes! And then, I think we started with CLO, and now we've tried to figure out better ways to reach out to our Asian-American communities, primarily like in the Lacey-Lacey UGA area.
Yeah, the Dia de Familia event is one of those ongoing events that the team participates in, so we try and meet people where they are. So, here is an example, this is Miriam and her daughter from our team.
She's amazing.
Out in the community, she is spectacular. So, we got a lot of feedback, this was an exercise here, you can see where they've got kind of voting on the different types of things that are important to people, so trying to make something that is this, for those of you online, I'm waving around my giant binder, that, something that's really complex, really detailed, accessible, and finding ways for people to provide input on it. So, the process, of course, there's a process. I mentioned before, this is currently still under review, and the Planning Commission is working on a draft recommendation on the comprehensive plan, there have been thirty-eight, starting tonight, it will be thirty-eight working sessions on the comprehensive plan, it's not quite as many as the Shoreline Master Program, but I think- It's, I don't think it's even halfway, maybe just over halfway for the Shoreline Master Program, but it's been a lot of work, there's been a lot of engagement, the Planning Commission has really been kind of driving that recommendation, and we expect to have a review draft in kind of late August, hopefully no later than September, but we might have to do a little bit of staging and kind of working in parallel. But the way that we've set this up is that we're going to be bringing sections, and we're going to be working through those early sections first, because we're planners, so that we can bring them before you all. And then, the other piece that Ashley mentioned before, on our little handouts here, we're highlighting the major policy questions that are coming up, kind of those tougher questions where it's going to be important to kind of focus and make decisions. But, we're going to be getting out of the Planning Commission, hopefully pretty soon here, we will have a draft ready for CPAD, we'll have a CPAD determination, and then we have started our board briefing, so this is number one of seven, that's our plan to bring these sections before you all, kind of one by one, or piece by piece, not one by one. The BOCC will have a public hearing and then a decision, and the goal is to have a decision, our statutory deadline is the end of the year, so that's our target.
Hey Derek, real quick, on this, back on this page.
Yes.
I think you said it, but the key themes from community feedback, is that kind of where you're trying to highlight the big things that are coming back to you?
Yeah, what we're hearing from the community, we're trying to stage that again, section by section, so you all won't be expected to read through a spreadsheet with six hundred comments to figure out what people thought about certain elements of the comprehensive plan.
But, yes, these themes are going to be tied to the bigger policy decisions that the Board will have to-
So, right now, you're hearing, limit industrial warehouses in rural areas, limit rural growth, expand water conservation, support agriculture and environment, and what I understand is that these aren't things that the staff is making up, this is what you're hearing from people that are participating. So, people have different concepts on the bigger questions, they need to participate.
They do.
And they do that by?
They do that by attending Planning Commission meetings, attending board briefings, submitting comments.
Thurston2045.org.
Thurston, yes.
So, this is a key factor here, because a lot of times what happens is we get down the road on these planning processes, and some group raises their hand and says, I didn't know anything about this, how come I wasn't included? They have done everything that they can to include everyone that they can, but it requires people participating to have this information come back to the Board. Thurston2045.org.
Thanks for the plug.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
And we need your guys' plugs as well, like, when you have that opportunity in the community, if folks have questions or comments or input, direct them to Thurston2045.org.
And there's a lot of information there, but definitely comment forums, and we are, all the comments that come in, we provide to the Planning Commission, and we always tell people, I mean, the best way to have your voice heard is really to show up and speak during the public comment section of the Planning Commission.
This is also the opportunity for us as community outreach individuals and representatives to weigh in with, you know, where we have gathered information and what we have developed as thoughts, so, you know, it's not, we did a survey, survey's it, now we get to weigh in, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Which is why we really, like, as early as possible, want to start highlighting those policy decisions for you, because there are things that the Planning Commission is really wrestled with, and it really is striking that balance between protecting the environment, supporting economic development, and as the policy body for the county, those are decisions that lie with you, so the Planning Commission will make the recommendation based on what they've heard, but ultimately, you all as a body get to make the decision on what the balance looks like.
And I think Commissioner Fornier, to your point, as there are stakeholder groups that reach out to you, various parts of our community, we really want this plan to be influenced by everyone in Thurston County, so continuing to direct them to not only view this quick briefing, but to put their information in, or to connect with Derek or Ashley, to get their thoughts heard, it's really important, because it's not missed upon me that this is a one- and ten-year process, and the need for us to activate every aspect of our community as we all come together, this very important planning document, to have that influence in there, and that informs you as commissioners to also take what you're hearing from the community and your constituent base, help influence the decisions you'll make towards the end of the year.
Right, thank you.
It was just one more.
Show that last slide, though, because it's kind of important, it shows the layout of the next briefings.
You'll see a lot of us over the next two months.
Yeah, on a weekly basis.
On a weekly basis.
Who knew you'd have this much fun?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is a good slide. Yeah, it's ten twenty-eight, I'm going to propose we break till ten forty, pick up with rates.
Yeah, that is a good slide.
I thought the format was pretty good.
Yeah. I don't think they needed to apologize for their, when they were saying ours won't be as snappy as Flood and Sorry. be as snappy as Flood and Sorry. Ready, yeah. My kids. All right. It's 10:40, we're picking back up after a short recess with our item three on the work session agenda, which is 2026-2027 rates briefing. We have a whole team of staff that will introduce themselves. And I'll pass it to Assistant County Manager, Jeff Walker.
Yes, thank you. So commissioners, this is the presentation of the 2026-2027 proposed internal rates for central services, IT, human resources, and the county's cost allocation plan, which is administered by the Auditors Office. So I think we will pull up the presentation. In, in the meantime, I am pitch hitting for our central services director who had previously scheduled vacation. And with me today, I have Gwendolyn Dane, who is the Central Services fiscal manager, Jason Ash, who is our facility services manager, Bruce Borba, fleet services manager, and Ellen Massey, who is a management analyst in central services.
Great lineup.
Yes, yes. So as we say, right, it, it takes a village. So these are the folks that are, are here that did some heavy lifting. We also have, they have teams of people that also worked on this as well. So we are going to get, I do need to click her as well. So cost allocation plan, this is basically the county's cost of doing businesses. So there are internal services, activities that are performed. These, the cost of doing this work is allocated out and charged back to those departments and offices that receive those services and benefits. We have three different types of funds, maintenance and operations funds, reserve funds, and risk funds. So you will hear from the different departments as they, as we go through and break down what the, the services are, you'll be identified as the different funds there as well. There, there were some challenges and staff did a great job rallying. As you know, we are continuing to work through and advance our new TC Connect system. One of the, one of the items that's the precursor to starting rates is having the actual expenses for the prior year. We don't have the actual expenses for the prior year because the year-end hasn't been closed out. So we have made some assumptions, staff has made some assumptions to do estimates of that, recognizing that we will be coming back in the first budget amendment to make some adjustments. Additionally, for 2027, we estimated just a 3% increase, recognizing that we come back every year to do these internal rates. Okay, so for central services, central services has four funds that they administer. They have an overall total budget of about $2.5 million. 56% of that is for general fund, is charged active general fund, and 42% is non-general fund. We are seeing about a 13.1% increase from 2025, or 2025 to 2026. The general fund impacts here are for the central services M&amp;O fund and the building reserves fund. And we will talk about the ERNR fund a little bit later and what that looks like. Specifically for this 5210, which is a central services maintenance and operations funds, these are the actual services. So within administrative services, this is the records, laser fish, mail, postage. The countywide services is, the activities are administration, budget, procurement, and contracting. And then we move into facilities, building, maintenance, and repair. So Jason's, Jason's group that takes care of the facilities that we have. So these, all of these activities make up that fund. For 2025, we are seeing an 8.6% increase from 2025 to 2026, a 6.8% increase within this operations and maintenance fund. And then we'll break down into the specifics that make up this fund. So for records management, we've allocated, this is allocated by total space. Mail services is allocated by deliveries per day, and then postage is the prior year's postage plus a percentage of increase. You can see the difference between 2025 and 2026. For records, about a 7% increase. This has to do with storage increases and then salary increases. So this is staff and then some direct costs. Same for mail services and for postage. So hopefully you've had an opportunity to review what was presented to you. So if you have specific questions on that, let me know. Otherwise, I'm going to just continue, continue through. Our countywide services within this fund, there's about a 5% increase. This is the addition of the central services director that was included, and then staff salary increases. For our facilities, building, and maintenance operations within this fund, we have a little over 12% increase on M&amp;O, which is a result of property insurance increases and then professional services for our new building. And you heard Jason, some of you heard Jason right before this started with the new sheriff's building, that we have some work that we're doing there on a fan that went down. So custodial, so this is just the cost of doing business and there's increases. So the cost of, our vendor costs have increased, did add a new building, salary increases. And then our utilities, we actually do the, a percentage increase in those, those dollars or percentages are provided by the utility companies. Our building reserves, so the building reserves fund is reused for infrastructure repairs and replacement. The county owns 25 buildings and we have an estimated value of those buildings, I think it's a conservative estimate of about $800 or $186 million. This is a 9% increase over last year. We did a 3% inflation adjustment and added the new building of Israel. So those are included in these, in these rates.
If I could, on the building reserve fund commissioners, at a later time, we'll be discussing the, what we're talking about internally as the full cost of ownership. We have facilities that need to have enhancements and the current rate really isn't keeping pace with that. So we'll be talking about that as a concept down the road. But it's important to kind of remember that number in the, in this fund.
Thank you. And then for fleet management, so two different funds. These are retrospective, so they're allocated by the asset, by a prior year costs, and then indirect costs and surcharge. And so these are, you'll, you'll see the, the increase on maintenance and operations. These are professional service hours to take care of our, our fleet. So that is why you're seeing a little bit of an increase there. And then on the equipment reserve, there's a significant increase there, 31%. And this is a directly related to the additional vehicles in the sheriff's office. We're also seeing a 20% increase in heavy-duty trucks and 39% increase, which is significant on our slope mowers and shoulder mowers. So these are direct costs to what would be public works. So it's significant. So what we do with these rates, so internal rates, this is elevated, these are all rolled up. These rates then get forwarded to departments and offices specific to their department and office. So once we're done here, they use these rates to build their biennial budgets, which are due at the end of this month.
So those, all these rates factor into the increase in support that departments need year over year?
So with fleet, for example, they would get charged, this is an aggregate number and the, a very, a particular department would get charged based on vehicles they use or own.
That is correct.
So when you say the sheriff's office, like the sheriff's office, a bunch of new vehicles, because there's a bunch of new staff, because of the public safety sales tax, but presumably that would be coming out of the sheriff's public safety sales tax budget or?
Right.
It's not going to affect the assessor, for example. I mean, just the fact that we brought on a bunch of new sheriff's vehicles.
Right. It's not, it's not across the board, there's a calculation, and it's not all general fund.
Correct. And so there will be. Correct. And so there will be an adjustment for the public safety sales tax. Right now it's with general fund, but that it it will get offset by the departments based off of the new staff and equipment that went with those. Any other specific questions regarding this? Okay. Thank you all very much. Okay. Hi, Sherry Ild, IT Director, and I'm here to talk to you about IT's fund, proposed rates. Okay, so in IT, we have three funds. We have our operations, which includes all the services and the licensing, the hardware, the software required to keep the county running. This includes our staff costs and then some of these costs include embedded staff that are embedded into offices and departments and they re they reimburse us for their costs. But my rates include those costs. For geodata and telecom, so in telecom, there are two different kinds of costs. One is the cost of providing the service in the phones and the other cost is a pass through cost of cellphone bills. So each month we get cellphone bills, we just pass those through and the offices and departments pay those. But they're in my rates so that offices and departments can plan for what we think it's going to cost them to pay their cellphone bills for 2026. The other two funds I have are reserve funds, our infrastructure reserve fund. We collect money to replace all of the equipment. We have a firewall that has a 10-year lifespan. We, when we purchase that firewall, we put it in to the rates and one tenth of it is charged each year until it's time to replace it again. It includes things like our countywide backup system. And our PCs are on a five-year replacement plan. So those that are general fund, we collect one-fifth of the cost of their endpoint PC each year so that we can replace it when it's time. And then our application reserve fund is the money we collect every year to be able to replace these large applications when the time is right. Any questions so far? Okay. So the total impact to the general fund, you can see our 2025 rates. General fund has gone up just under $2 million. Some of this will also be offset by the public safety sales tax because we did not separate public safety sales tax charges this year. So when we come back for our first quarter, then we'll be able to adjust that. Total impact is about 9%. All right, so in I, we're going to break those down. IT services, this is our 5250 operations fund. You can see the increase. And the the majority of these costs come from an increase of FTEs, an increase of buildings. Every building that we purchase and stand up, we have to increase our costs to support it. New applications being on boarded. And this year we have a total of $7.6 million in licensing and maintenance for existing services. That's every software cost that we pay, plus ones that are kind of invisible. We pay for equipment in IT to be able to support the county and these costs are included in this 5250 fund. Our infrastructure reserve fund is increasing by about $400,000. And the biggest cost here is not only the increased number of FTEs, but also we have about an average of 27% increase in the cost of hardware. So we've been collecting for five years to replace hardware. And now that we're going to purchase it, we didn't collect enough because the cost has increased so much since 2020. So we had to adjust our rates to for the new costs. And again, anytime there's a new building, we have new infrastructure. So we need to start collecting to replace infrastructure in those new buildings. And the IT application reserve fund has increased just a little bit. I worked with the budget office to revamp this application replacement fund. The cost of application licensing and implementation have also gone up quite a bit. So I worked with them to come up with a new rate over the next, however, many years. Some of them are 10-year collection, some of them are five-year collection. It just depends on the application and how often we need to replace it, stuff like that. That, any questions? All right.
Thank you, Sherry.
In charge.
Good morning, commissioners. Maria Pante, human resources. With me is Tara Wickline, she's our compensation and benefits manager. And Brian Bishop, he's our risk and safety manager. I'll do the high level overview and then I'll turn it over to them to present on their respective funds. So as you know, human resources provides a variety of internal services to other offices and departments. Things like employee relations, benefits administration, recruitment, insurance coverage and things like that. We do administer three internal service funds, benefits administration. There's a leave buyout fund and then there's the insurance risk fund. And as we've been speaking to today, these costs are recovered through rates charged to customers. With that, I'll I'll turn it over to Tara and she'll talk to you about the two funds, the benefits and the leave buyout funds. And I think there's some good news there in terms of rates with that.
Thank you. Okay, so the benefits fund is a fund that provides the funds for 2.7 FTEs. It also provides for all of the administration fees and supplies that are involved with the county's benefit programs, our medical dental vision. Those employees also handle all personnel changes. So any new hires that come into the county and any separations or promotions, all of that work is handled by those employees and funded from the benefits fund. The leave buyout fund is a fairly new fund. This was just created a few years ago. And this one was created to assist offices and departments with the leave cash outs that are due to employees that are retiring from the county. For many years, those, you know, those that are retiring tend to have larger leave balances and offices and departments have struggled, especially some of the smaller ones, to be able to afford and absorb those massive cash outs in our existing budget. So this fund was created to assist them with that. The fund currently pays for 25% of a cash out when an employee retires. We don't pay for just regular separations, just retirements at this point. As far as rates for both the benefits fund and a leave buyout fund, we are proposing no change to the rates. The benefits fund several years ago had grown to where it should not have grown to. It was it was too big, there was too much money in there. The goal is to keep essentially six months of operating costs in that fund. And so for the past few years, we haven't had any increases to the fund. And now we're finally getting to the point where I think this biennium will get that fund down to where it needs to be. So next biennium, I might have a different, you know, proposal. But for this one, rate should be status quo. And the same for the leave buyout, with that still being a new fund and we're still trying to figure, you know, the average of what that fund is actually going to pay.
Is there been use of that fund?
There has been, not as much as we expected. The trend right now tends to be that offices and departments are letting employees kind of run out their leave rather than having a cash out. So utilization was not as much as we expected.
Public run out their leave means they just take the vacation time until they actually separate versus separating and then all that being cashed out at one time.
So so far to date, we, that fund has reimbursed departments $55,000. And with the retirements that we at least are aware of, it should pay out at least $111,000 by the end of the year.
Prudent approach to put that aside, especially with where the demographics are still for almost every municipality across the nation. So good job, board, forethought to do that.
Is the leave buyout just for vacation time or is it?
It includes the the sick, yeah, the additional sick leave cash out that you get when you retire. It includes that as well, 25% of the cash out.
Yeah, we started it as a pilot, sort of, and it was like, well, we'll see how, you know, see how it's used and how the fund, you know, maybe we can increase it or maybe we can't afford it. I mean, we were, it was just sort of a starting point to sort of see. We'd like to help because it was like, it was like right around the pandemic where we were, we were, we were looking at, you know, treasurer's office and the assessor, I can't remember. Some of the littler departments were coming in going, I got, like, I can see what's coming, like a bunch of retirements. I can't afford this, is there any way that commissioners could help? And we and we came up with this as a starting point. So it's something we could talk about tweaking if the numbers are
Absolutely.
suggest it, you know, it wasn't any magic. It was just a conservative way to kind of offer some help and see how it how it would work.
With that, I will, oh, I'm sorry, were there any other questions about?
Sorry, I was a little slow in raising my hand.
Go ahead and you're up.
Thank you. I just kind of wanted to add on on that piece that I agree with Commissioner Mengers. I I also would like to kind of see the rate, but also the the fund, right? And, you know, is there a possibility, you know, how can we start using that fund a little more if it's not being used enough? And that that is definitely one of the ones that I would like to to circle back on as well.
Yeah, we can come up with some recommendations and present those back to the board.
Absolutely, yeah, or collect less.
Collect less or pay out departments more, open 25%.
25% maybe.
50%, you know, something that could easily.
I was sort of hopeful we could get to 50%, you know, but we just weren't sure at the beginning. But maybe we can, I don't know, we'll see. That would really help them, I think, on the type of, the really small offices.
Okay, with the risk fund, the risk fund pays basically all insurances for the county. I mean, that's the general liability, our property coverage. We have above ground storage tanks, bonds for elected officials, pretty much all of our auto liability. So any insurances or claims paid out of, or need for insurance are paid out of the risk fund. We we keep a reserve fund in there based on the insurance commissioner's recommendations and our actuary setting a level based on our past claims paid, expected claims to be paid in the future. So we have a reserve fund in there as well that's kept in the risk fund to pay the future claims. Also, out of this fund, we will pay for outside legal representation and any experts where we have, you know, the county is being sued. We're going into litigation and we need to bring in experts. And of course, any settlements for claims or lawsuits are also paid out of the risk fund. We are expect, not expecting, sorry, we are proposing a overall 16% increase in the risk fund. To give you an exact number, it'd be a little complicated because in 2025, we had a 15-month premium payment to the risk pool because they're changing from a December to a January. So we paid for 15 months last year. Then in 2026, you know, I could give you a number, but it's actually going down because we're paying for 12 months. But when you break it out on a month by month allocation, it's actually a 16% increase month over month when you take out the 15 months and set the two years equal.
So it's good news, but really bad news.
Good news on paper.
Always that way with the risk fund.
That is true.
Bad news mass is good news.
Good news on paper, but when you really look at it, it's.
I think you're breaking it out that way, it's helpful.
It is, it is an increase. So. Go into the next page.
We'll talk about the proposed rate increases. And and as Tara said, there's nothing proposed for benefits or the leave buyout. And I'll let Brian speak to it, but there is a significant increase for general liability. There typically is, you know, insurance is rather volatile. Property, 5% and then other insurances, no increase. But I can let you speak to a little bit to why the general liability is increasing.
We did just meet and we're always projecting based on estimates and projections. So it's a projection of a projection. We will get the final rates in October when our board of directors, which Commissioner Mahia is our director for the risk pool. When they meet in October, they will set the premiums, assessments, kind of our rates that we need to pay the risk pool in January. We've talked to the brokers and the risk pool at our last executive committee meeting. They stated that it's very likely we will have a 25% increase at least. That's due to, the pool has a reserve fund that they have to keep under the insurance commissioner's regulations as well. That reserve fund has depleted quite a bit more than what they expected over last year. So we're really at the very bottom minimum of what the reserve we should keep.
That's based on statewide claims, like not particular to us necessarily?
It's not, in fact, last year Thurston County had a pretty good year as opposed to the year before that. As far as claim cost, claim payouts, even year to date today is is looking pretty well. But it's an overall and when you're looking at premiums, you're looking at a three to five year history. And that's what's setting your rates going forward is that history because claims take a while to develop, take a while to close. From the time they're filed till you go into litigation or trial, that's two, three years out. So when you finally pay that claim and close it, you're a few years out. So it kind of caught up with the pool in last October till now. That reserve fund has depleted by, I think, three or four million. And we're down at the bottom level of where our reserve fund really needs to be for the pool. So the pool says we need to build that up so that we can pay claim payments and keep our pool active. So we need to collect a little bit more from all the members to build up that fund as well as pay for future claims. The other issue you may have heard out there is the SAM claims, sexual abuse and molestation claims that are hitting the state very heavily. And they're hitting all the counties as well. Within our pool, we have 140 claims against our juvenile detention centers among the 24 pools or 24 counties. Other counties just alone are seeing 100 claims just on their own county, the larger counties. So there is a, there's a large, well, there's a firm out there that's being funded by private investigator or private investors to kind of fund this lawsuit.
Commercials all over the radio.
That's the one. You've heard it, so you can see how well publicized this is. It's on Facebook, it's commercials, radio commercials.
It's also a real issue. I worked in Green Hill and saw it firsthand.
There are, right, there are some real issues, some are very vague. So we're having to kind of set different levels of our reserves for these types of claims. Some are very vague and ambiguous, some are like, oh, yeah, I know this detention officer, explain him, know his name and everything. Others are just, you know, a large portly man with a bulbous nose and gray hair. That's the description of the person that they're talking about. So we're having to reserve these at different levels based on where we think the payout could be or how viable each of these claims are.
And what you're explaining is just what's contributing to.
The need, one, the impact of where the, the, um, reserve fund needs to be and where it needs to be built up. So there's lots of things that go into that, but.
You're right. So when I'm telling you this, the underwriters, insurers are seeing this as well and they're making us change, um, kind of the way we do our.
Like when we ask you, when we're talking about different claims that we deal with, is this going to affect our insurance rates? This is how those types of claims and lawsuits that we also encounter, but maybe not those exact ones, affect our claims and insurance rates, right?
Exactly.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you. Okay, so next up, we have the auditor's office with the cost allocation plan and I think, um, maybe. There he is.
It's me. That's, that's, yes.
Kitchen window guy.
I will advance your.
Can everyone see me there? Hopefully. Uh, yeah, I, um, good morning, uh, BOCC. I'm Ronald Haney and I'm, uh, presenting, I, I have the privilege again of presenting the update of the county's cost allocation plan. So it's, uh, kind of similar to central services. It's a cost allocation plan, but in this case, uh, there's no. It's not funded out of a separate fund. It's paid out of the general fund and this is a, uh, plan for reimbursement of. Uh, internal services that the, uh, county provides, um, other funds annually. So. That's kind of an overall synopsis of what this is and it kind of ties in closely to, uh, to central services presentation because they're both. They both involve cost allocation. Uh, just in my case here, there's no rates. It's all costs on, on what that reimbursement is annually. So, uh, in two thousand twenty-six, uh, the general fund will collect, uh, about eight and a half million. And that's an increase of, uh, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Kind of the catch though is this is not for the first time. In thirty-five years, uh, this is not a real update. So, and the reason is, is because, um, the, it's, you know, we do this based on costs. And with the implement, implementation of the, um, of TC Connect, uh, we are still waiting on, um, reports. And that kind of thing. So we really don't have that at this point. So as kind of a placeholder, uh, what we decided to do is, uh, we're. Uh, increasing, uh, everyone's cost by minimal two percent. And then when these reports become available later on this year and we're able to compute a true up. We'll include that adjustment in the two thousand twenty-seven rates that we will be, um. Billing in two thousand twenty-seven.
Ron, if I could quickly, um, thanks so much for highlighting that third bullet point.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, commissioners, what that'll mean is in the two thousand twenty-seven, it will increase, um, more than just what it will normally increase. Because they're going to take the amount that is unknown and we do believe that it's higher than two percent, but don't have any data to really prove, to show that at this point. The data is being worked on and will be forthcoming. But I appreciate Ron highlighting that so that we don't look at two thousand twenty-seven as seeing it being off kilter in any way.
Is it TC Connect issue that we're, in terms of the unavailable reports?
It's the inability to close, which great progress is being made, but because you can't close out two thousand twenty-fourth. So you don't have the actual costs and we use the actual costs that starts to then make the adjustments for, um, future costs.
And we can't close it out because of TC Connect.
And the other thing that kind of feeds into them is we're, uh, currently trying to get our year end financials out. So we've had, uh, some, uh, extended deadlines to do that this year and we still need to do that. And then the way this process has always worked. Processes is once we get those year end financials out, then we start working on the cost plan. So, uh, uh, you know, luckily we can, uh, make some estimates. And then adjust. We can't do that with our year end financial statement. So those are currently taking a priority. In terms of what is, uh, being, uh, produced by the new system.
Thank you, Ron.
You bet. So the next slide. So this ought to be fairly quick, uh, but also kind of a review, uh, to understand just what a cost plan is all about. Uh, um, and, and what this represents. And it's, uh, you know, like you said, a rate plan that, uh. Allocates out internal services of the general fund and the, those services, uh, you can kind of put them into certain categories. Uh, I do anyway, uh, you know, you have your standard to just understand what we're billing out from the general fund. Uh, you, you have your HR and accounting. They're kind of standard internal services. Uh, you have more, uh, non-standard. That we also bill out, uh, BOCC and assessor, um, and, uh. And, but we also have some others, uh, we kind of need to justify. And we've been able to do that and that includes, uh, the planning and emergency services that are funded out of the general fund. So we re, have a real. Smorgasbord, so to speak, of, uh, of services that are charged and billed out into the cost plan, uh, the county's general fund cost plan. Kind of the, one of the key things is these are done at the discretion and direction of the board. Uh, you could. A board could literally make a decision not to bill anything out or they could make a decision to just bill certain services out. So, um. And, uh, those are policy decisions of the board and they're really kind of all, uh, uh, the last kind of change was in two thousand eleven. Where we went to the full cost plan because the general fund was running out of money and, uh, that's kind of the, uh, the last, you know. Major policy decision, uh, by the board, uh, over, over the, uh, uh, for, for the cost plan. And that's what we currently do. We've done it every year. This is another, uh, update to that plan. Yeah, so all the costs are billed to funds except for, now, we don't bill out some, like we're different from an internal service fund. We, uh, uh, we have to, first of all, uh, we can't bill out external services. Okay, so we don't, don't bill out the sheriff. Um, we, uh, uh, and we don't bill the general fund because, you know, the, we, we pay these costs out of the general fund. So to a certain extent, those costs, uh, are, are already paid. And then when it comes to outside agencies, uh, you know, we have some, uh, services like financial services and treasurer that provide services. To, uh, outside agencies. We really can't bill them, uh, because, uh, we're not authorized to do that by statute. Uh, or in our local agreement. Uh, next slide. Thank you. Uh, yeah, so, uh, service costs, uh, where we do it. So you make. The key decisions, the policy decisions, um, on, uh, what is internal service and what we allocate out and who we bill. And then, um, the, uh, financial services along with, uh, board staff comes up with allocation drivers to allocate this out. To come find a way to equitably do it. Um, and, uh, uh, there, uh, it's a two-year lag. Uh, it's always billed out based on actual, but that involves a two-year lag and, um, you know, since this is a complete full cost. Kind of the standard process is if a fund can't pay it, they can always, um, uh, have the option of asking for a subsidy from the board. During the budget process. Uh, next slide, yeah. Um, uh, user funds are sent detailed statements and reasons for any changes are noted, uh, in the statement. Uh, this is really kind of, uh, from my standpoint, kind of the, uh, uh, real key part of the overall process because. Uh, you're, to get the money into the general fund, you have to take it out of other funds and, uh, you know, normally you got to be able, you have to be able to explain that. So. That's what these statements do. They, uh, go out every year as soon as the cost plan is updated. Uh, and, uh, thirty, and the reasons for any significant changes are noted in those, uh, in those statements. Uh, next slide. Uh, the following, uh, is a summarized draft of the two thousand twenty-six full cost plan. And as noted, it's kind of identical to all, all prior cost plans. There it is. So it's, uh, eight and a half million. There's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar increase. And it's just a two percent increase. So we really, normally I present a slide also on the increase in costs. By service center, but we haven't updated those yet, which like I said, we will do towards the end of this year and then do a true up adjustment. In the two thousand twenty-seven cost plan. Uh, but, uh, interesting thing here, at least from my standpoint, is. Uh, it's a twenty-four million dollar plan, uh, twenty-four and a half almost, and we're only billing out eight and a half. So, so, uh, you can see on there where, what, um, what does it end up getting billed? Well, it's all general and agency funds. There's, um, a small portion there that, uh, I believe is, is regional planning, uh, which is a unique, uh, not a separate agreement with the auditor's office. For services we provide, but, um, so the, the real, uh, uh, like I said, we don't bill general fund and agency funds, which is. The primary reason why, um, the, uh, the only eight and a half million is billed out of twenty-four. That's pretty much it. Um, uh, the, uh, you know, uh, any questions, uh, about the plan this year or in general? About the process that, uh, that, uh, we use for, uh, updating this every, every year? Any questions about? Policies that the board may have with respect to this plan also?
Questions for Ron? Yep. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
So next steps on this, the more detailed. Impacts to departments and offices will be sent to them, um, and they will add these into their, um, development of their twenty-six, twenty-seven budgets.
How do they get, the individual departments get an opportunity to weigh in on the cost allocation plans? Kind of like, like medic one has brought up. That, you know, there's things that they do already on their own, that they don't understand why they get billed for on top of, you know, like IT services. They have. Their own IT stuff and then they pay an IT bill to, you know, central services or wherever, or IT. And so that, do they get an opportunity to weigh in on how that affects them or?
Absolutely.
I'll do that. Yeah, they do, um, you know, as they can talk with summer, they can talk with, uh, central services, IT. And go through the different billings to see, is it aligned to actually what they're receiving?
Okay.
Uh, and the internal service, service rate departments do connect to make sure that departments, they, they give this presentation to departments and make sure that departments are. Understanding where the rates are so they can go, hey, I don't understand that.
As clarification, that's not, the presentation piece of it is not happening this year, um, separately. That's what this presentation was. Generally, we've done them separately, but there's always the opportunity, um, for the director. To have a conversation with the IT director, with the central services director.
Yeah, because like we didn't really get into it today, but in the past I've asked a lot of questions and other commissioners about. Like each one of these is calculated or each one is charged out in a kind of a different methodology. I remember grilling Robin about it, like. So, you know, this one might be based on square footage that you've got, the building reserve or whatever. This one might be based on the, you know, how many cars you, or how many. Vehicle miles you traveled and you, you know, this one may be just a flat fee to everyone. I mean, each one is like, there's a decision point about how to, like, we have a little bit of flexibility and there's a decision where we sort of decide, what's the fairest? Most equitable way to allocate these costs and it differs from one to one, like it's not just one way.
Yes, and that's what you'll see on each of those slides with specific fund. It says how it's being allocated. Whether it's by end user, whether it's by vehicle, pieces of equipment.
And a director could come back and say, and make a case that, that like, that, that, that it's based on something about their funding model or their. They could come and try to make a case that it's inequitably allocated to them and that would be considered by.
They could. Just remembering that there's a total cost and it gets allocated out. Um, so if it's not. Paid for here and there's an adjustment here, there's an adjustment somewhere else.
But for some and for some groups that would matter. For other groups, it's probably all out of the general fund anyways.
I would say, I think it matters to everyone.
Okay.
Um, and I think it's also why our internal service providers are, are really focusing on. How efficient, that operational excellence, that being efficient, um, providing a high level of customer service. But our customers are driving. Some of those costs, right? So Sherry talked about, um, I think we have, I don't think she mentioned it, but we have three hundred servers. So there's a level of effort to support those three hundred servers. If there's a new software that comes online, what does that, what does that look like? What's the cost of that? That is meeting. A business need of our, of our lines of business. That's the service that, that IT or central services was providing.
And even though it's expensive, it is still better to be coordinated like in an IT department so that you have a centralized location. Looking at what are the best practices for security and, uh, application of software, uh, and services. So, yeah, departments that may think, whoa, that's a really high bill. If we can't sit down and explain it, then there's a problem. So I know that the team has done that in the past.
Okay, any other questions on rates, cost allocation before we move forward? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Good to see you.
Item four, commissioner items first up is kind of a, our typical, um, standing item for our commissioner check-ins, which is basically happening in the context of this work session. So reports on external boards and commissions. Does anyone have an external board report they'd like to share? I'll just open it up.
I, I just have a kind of an update that, uh, on the Pac-9, of course, development board. Um, I've got a couple. People who's, um, are serving on there as the employer representatives and both of their terms are up. Um, and so I just wanted to let you know that, um, I'll be renominating David. Um, Schaefer, uh, as the, um, and, and then looking to fill the other seat. Just those male names, dates I have in that.
No, I gave my update last night. Commissioners, Mahia or Klaus, any external board reports?
Not for me, thank you.
Yep.
I won't go into detail of mine, but I guess the one that I will report on is TRPC. Uh, we did approve the regional transportation plan and we did end up removing the log cabin road as well as leaving. The equity and clinical language in the RTP.
Okay, thank you. I do not have any reports either. So are there any other commissioner items?
Yes.
Yeah, you're up.
Thank you. I want to address, uh, the conversation that happened, um, yesterday. And even though I wasn't able to be at yesterday's meeting, I wanted to be clear, um, clear some of the misconceptions that were stated, uh, in the meeting in regards to. The signs and the website and. First, the suggestion to post signage in public buildings came from Commissioner Klaus and I do not support that approach. While I understand the desire for visible statements of support. I believe our focus needs to be an action that truly serves and protects impacted communities. I have been actively working on this issue for quite some time. This is not abstract to me. It's very personal. The fear and uncertainty we're hearing about are not just theoretical concerns. These are realities impacting my family, my friends, former clients and many in our community. I live this every day and I carry it with me. That's why I propose creating a centralized website modeled on best practices from other counties. A resource that includes accurate vetted information that have legal language attached to it, attached to it and updates on relevant county policies. And connections to local support networks, which leads me to the next misconception that staff or I have taken a long time with this. That kind of work takes time, not because of red tape or governmental bureaucracy, but because real outreach takes time. Outreach to organizations, outreach to community members and coordination with experts to make sure. What we do is both effective and responsible. Commissioner Klaus brought up two separate ideas, the know your rights resources and making the public stand. And I agree both deserve attention. But if we're going to do this, we really need to do it right. Commissioner Mensah and I have already met with local groups and are working on aligning our internal policies to ensure that county. Practices reflect our values and responsibilities. I understand the urgency some commissioners feel and I feel it and I share it. But we just don't get to cut corners just to say we did something. This is too important. This is too important. We need solutions that are thoughtful, informed by those most impacted and sustainable over time, not performative solutions. Symbolism has its place, but what our community needs most is substance, and that's what I'm committed to delivering. So with that, I will make a motion to amend the direction given to the county manager to put a website out by Friday and schedule that to Tuesday of next week. So proposed draft of the website can be brought to the full board for review and so that every board member can understand what's on the website and if approved can go live by the end of day Tuesday.
I'll second that. Any discussion on Commissioner Mahia's motion? Commissioner Klaus?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to first start by acknowledging and appreciating Commissioner Mahia's personal connection to this issue. I understand I understand the deep impact this has on you and lots of other community members. And that's why I'm committed to supporting action as well, not just conversation, but actionable steps. And I want to clarify that the action yesterday was to post vetted know your rights information on the county website as a first step. I think if the, you know, I I absolutely support the idea of going beyond that and developing a centralized, comprehensive hub, which it sounds like is what is being suggested. You know, and I'm committing or I'm committed to working with the full board on building out this next phase. But I do think that the board's action yesterday should stand. I, you know, this is really urgent to be as quick as possible. And I understand that Commissioner Mahia is connected to a lot of groups that are working on this. And I am also connected to a number of groups that are working on this as well and have also been working really hard on outreach to ensure that I'm not just coming in with my own ideas, but I'm, you know, trying to uplift the voices of impacted community members who are sharing those fears and concerns with me and who have asked that the board take immediate action on this. So I would respectfully request that the motion that passed yesterday was, you know, which was to have this posted by close of business Friday stands. And I guess I'll leave it at that for now.
Other discussion? And I'm I'll I'll support the motion. I, you know, I want to do something that makes sense and is substantive. Now, I don't want to just, you know, like whatever the best practice is, and I I respect Commissioner Mahia working on that. I don't want to just create a selfie spot in front of the courthouse. You know, I want something that actually means something. So, you know, if that takes, you know, three, three more days and that's what Commissioner Mahia is asking for, so she can do some more research because she has been working on this, then, you know, I I stand in support of that request. I, yeah, I mean, this is kind of exactly why I didn't support the initial motion of like some immediate posting because we were basically deferring to Commissioner Mahia on content, but we didn't know the status of the content. I've seen the basic know your rights, you know, piece, but if there's anything more going into this, and I think there should be and it'd be great if there was, then I'd like to see it. And to me, an extra two business days is not unreasonable to make sure a more comprehensive set of information gets eyeballed by the commissioners and developed by Commissioner Mahia and the county manager. So I'm supportive of the motion based on this new input. Any other discussion? Okay, call for the vote. On favor, say aye. Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, motion carries. County manager, you understood the motion?
Yep, thank you so much.
All right, any other commissioner items? Thank you, Commissioner Mahia. Any other commissioner items? All right, thanks, everybody.